So I'm gonna read off the checklist for the right to know. As Chair of the Sanborn Regional School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and to listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are, A, providing a public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Sanborn Regional School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: Meeting ID 97112455268, or by clicking on the following website address: B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Sanborn Regional School District at www.17.net. C, providing a mechanism for public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-642-8541, or email helpdesk@saush17.net. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So, starting as people appear on my screen, Larry?
Larry Heath, I'm in my shop in my basement. There is nobody present.
Matt?
Matt Angel, I'm at the SAU office, and there's no one here in my office.
Don?
Don Dutton, I am in my home, and I snuck away into a quiet room with no one else.
Pete?
Yeah, I'm in my home, I'm in my office, door is closed, nobody's here.
Charlie?
Charlie Melvin, I'm home in my kitchen by myself.
Tammy?
Tammy Mahoney, I'm in my home in a room by myself.
Jamie?
Jamie Fitzpatrick, I'm in my home office by myself.
Tom?
I'm Ambrose, I'm at the SEU office alone.
And Jim Baker, and I'm in a room in my home alone. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, so... Tom, you've got something to discuss with us.
Yeah, yeah, so certainly, we've had a number, I mean, I think, I was cleaning out my email, and I couldn't believe every time I clicked on it, it was a COVID case. I mean, it really, where we're at at this point is that we have 132 people quarantining, or, I'm sorry, 136 people quarantining. Daniel, if I could share my screen, I'll just show this real quick.
You are set to do that.
Thank you very much, sir. So as you can see from this dashboard here, that we've been working on, we don't have, it's not the number of, it's, as with the entire last four months, or 10 months, it's not the number of cases. Really, these last eight weeks have been about the number of quarantines, right? It's the people that it's putting into quarantine. So, we have 50 people at Bakie in quarantine, nine of them are staff members, eight staff members at Memorial, and 52 people quarantining. And they're updating this dashboard by the hour. So this was the last snapshot that I took about 30 minutes ago. The middle school is a little bit lower at 11, and the high school is at 19. But the problem is that for the middle school and high school, it's affecting the number of teachers. So, I think that the real message that I have today is this. I've met with the administration and talked with them, and there's no question, Memorial cannot continue to go the way they're going with the number of quarantines they had. We had a case today where two children came in, came back as COVID positive, and that pushed it over for Memorial. It's moved so many of the specials and teachers to remote, that it's very difficult even with the subs. So, what I really want to, I'm recommending to you that Memorial go remote for the next four days, and I want to have a real conversation about whether or not Bakie should or not. And we talk about all of it, of course, but I'm on the fence. So Bakie at this point has at least 10 staff members that need to be substitute teachers in order to stay open for the next four days. Because the other parts of the district are remote, I can send a number of subs and maybe some paras over to Bakie to help out. The question the principal was asking me about is, at what point is it a diminishing return? Where it's better for the teachers to just teach them remote, and have their teachers with them to teach their classes, versus substitutes that aren't, you know, as highly qualified people for a number of days? I think that my recommendation at this point is that we could give Bakie a try for a couple of days, and, or we can try to go the rest of the week with the substitute teachers that we have available, and see how it goes, and then if we continue to get cases, you could authorize me to make the decision in a day or two. But I just want to be very transparent that we are literally down to the point where it's starting to be a situation where we literally just have subs covering the majority of classes in a public school. And that's certainly not a situation that I feel really great or comfortable about, especially when the majority of the staff members, who would be providing the typical instruction and are the best suited to provide that instruction, those staff members are available and quarantining, not actually physically ill. So if you think back to July, this is the exact circumstance that I told you all about in July was, there's gonna be a point where the process that's mandated by law makes it hard for us to function, not necessarily the number of COVID cases, and that's exactly what has been happening. So I leave it up to you as a board. My recommendation is that Memorial needs to close, they just don't have enough staff. I'm willing to try to move the staff from Memorial that is available, or from the other schools, the subs. Remember, all the people who are remote are still teaching their full normal load, so they're not available. But there are some people, a small group, particularly substitutes, that I might be able to shift down to Bakie and give it a try. But I just need you to know that I'm even at the edge of my comfort zone with the number of people who are subbing versus normal certified full-time educators.
So I'm sure people have questions. Who wants to go first?
Oh, come on, Jamie, just put your hand up.
I was waiting for somebody else like that.
I'm just calling you, I'm like, hey, you know.
Don?
No, Jamie, just go, Jamie.
Alright, so, on your data sets, Tom, you said we had nine staff out at Bakie, eight staff out at Memorial. Do you have that data set for middle school and high school?
I'd have to ask them, we already put them on remote, so I don't have that at my fingertips, because I didn't plan to discuss them.
Okay. So, some of my concerns are obviously it's better to keep kids in school. And the cases would say, we can do that. Do we have any evidence or any indication that we have experienced student-to-student transmission on premises? Do we have any indication of that?
Yeah, we had, for the first time, thank you for asking, on Saturday, for the first time, we had a direct trans, well, up, what appears to be a direct transmission case. So we had a group of students at the high school who quarantined, they received COVID tests, and one of them came back positive. I think it's important to remember, Jamie, that correlation doesn't necessarily mean causation.
Yep.
But they were in the same group, so there's reasonable, it's reasonable suspicion. We are not, we are not having, I just want to be clear for the public, we are not having any problems in the organization with regard to our safety protocols, or what I would consider to be school-wide transmission. The problem is that the three prongs from the Governor's Task Force are the number of cases per thousand of PCR tests in the county. Our area is, the typical amount is 10.8, we're at about 12.5. The second criteria is whether or not you have too many staff members who can't work to run the school. So that would be kind of where we're falling in. The third one is school-wide transmission, which means that your safety protocols, like social distancing, hand sanitizing, and doing all the things that we're doing, aren't working. That is not what we're seeing at all. Our problem is the number of people who have to quarantine is making it difficult for us to effectively staff the schools.
So, the, right now, we have, we have middle school out on remote this week, and then, you know, then the standard plan that we had for next week, which is, we're out, then the holiday, we're out, and we come back in, extra week in remote. So that's already in play for the middle school and the high school, really. So we're talking about what's going on in Memorial, what's going on in Bakie. At Memorial presently, we have both of the sixth grade, well, we have two sixth grade classes out, right?
Yeah, we have, so what happened was, the teachers at, the kids, there were two kids today, siblings, one at Bakie and one at Memorial, and it affected both schools, so it put the rest of the sixth grade out.
So the, I guess the question is, is there a means whereby we keep Memorial fourth and fifth, and Bakie? We structure such that we don't do the specials for this week, and focus on the non-specials for the week to be able to properly staff and keep K through five in class for the next four days?
I don't think that we can do that. We don't have enough people. We were scraping, scraping to get Bakie to be open for the next four days. It was really hard. Like, they're on the phone right now in the other room, we've been working on it for the last hour. I just, I don't think that we have enough staff, enough staff members to balance out the equation, because you can't buy contract, you can't, you have to have the specials run, because people have to have their prep periods by contract. You can't do what you just suggested.
But you can keep Bakie open.
I think, I'm willing to give it a shot, Jim, I just wanted you all to know that the percentage of teachers who are substitutes is really, really high. Right?
Well, we're talking four days at this point, right?
Yep, and I'll just say it, I think everyone's kind of hoping Thursday's gonna be a snow day, right? I mean, you know.
Well, to me, it's still, we can't, well, I suppose if the, if the union agreed, we could. So, it would be something that could be discussed.
I would have to have, you can't, Jamie, schools don't move that fast. I know what you're saying, and I agree with your premise. But you have to do, we'd have to do a sidebar agreement with the union, and I'm sure that that would take at least two days to negotiate. I could try, but you're not, what you're basically asking teachers to do is to come to school all day long and teach without a break from 7:15 or 8:30 in the morning until 3:30, which, Pete, go ahead and speak to this.
That's not what I'm suggesting at all. I'm suggesting we focus on four core classes or so, and we don't do anything outside of those classes, and try to staff those classes.
Yeah, it doesn't, I know it seems easy and simple on the surface, and I'm not disagreeing with that idea. What I'm saying to you is that, in order to give teachers breaks, you have to have staff to cover the breaks.
Just to give you kind of an idea what is going on. Can it be done? Yes, but you've got to understand a couple of things. One, if a teacher is not in the classroom, and something breaks out, meaning a fight or something, the teacher is liable even though they're not in the classroom. Now, I bring that up to say this. You go by bells as a teacher. If I have to go to the bathroom, I have from that minute that bell rings, to the minute that bell rings again, to do whatever it is I have to do and get back. And by the way, I'm not in that classroom, which means while I'm going to the bathroom, if there's a fight in my classroom, I am liable. So to try to get a sidebar like you think, isn't as simple as, oh, sure, we'd be glad to help out? Because, I'll tell you, you really do leave yourself open. So although, on the face of it, it looks okay, but can you imagine if you have to go, I'm gonna use the bathroom, and you literally have three minutes to leave your classroom, get to the men's room, whatever you're doing, and get back in time? And by the way, if something breaks out in your classroom while you're doing that, you're liable. You literally don't have time. And people, I'm gonna give you something that is kind of, I used to say to people, they say, "What's it like to teach?" And I used to say to the people, "What happens if you want to go to the bathroom at work?" And they look at me like I'm crazy. I said, "No, seriously, what do you do?" They said, "Go to the bathroom." And I say, "I don't." So I know it's kind of outlandish, and it's kind of a grotesque point that I'm giving here, but it's real teaching and real work for those teachers who are in there. So, it looks on the face of it that, well, yeah, we're just gonna sidebar, the teachers do it. It's much more complex than that.
Jamie, are you, I might have misunderstood your point, Jamie, please help me, because I might not understand it. Are you, are you thinking that maybe what we could do is just have a shortened school day for the next four days? Like, go to school from?
No, I'm trying to kind of give a flavor of what it's like.
Pete, Tom was asking Jamie what his proposal was.
Oh, Jamie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay, Pete, I'm trying to understand, I don't want to misinterpret Jamie's proposal.
Okay. So what I'm trying to figure out is, is there a path to keep kids in school? So, we had X number of staff that were out on quarantine on Friday. And with that X number of staff out on quarantine on Friday, we were okay with Memorial and Bakie being in school all this week. Now, we've had some instances, and the question is, how much additional staff got impacted by those quarantines, and now make Memorial not tenable and Bakie on the cusp? And then the question is, given that staff reduction, can we rebalance the day, focus on key subjects, and whatever else falls out, falls out? And if that's a shortened day, if that's less other classes, whatever falls out, falls out to try to achieve keeping Bakie and Memorial through fifth in, and still being able to hit the key core courses? I guess is the question.
And I'm saying that my opinion, and what we discussed as an admin team, as we went through the day and the torture of what today has been, we feel like we can probably keep Bakie open, but it's a high percentage of substitutes. That's the answer, Jamie, is that I agree with you, that you could, we, you got to understand that the percentage of subs is so high that it begs the question, you asked the question earlier about the staffing at the high school, 10 staff members are out at the high school. It just comes to the point where we just don't have enough people to cover all that, because when you look at it across the district, we're looking at 27 people being out on top of other people that were already out. You have to remember that it's not just, like, we started with the normal staffing of our school district, and then we went to 27 people being out. We're talking about, already, we were at, as I lovingly called it, you know, duct tape and rubber bands. But I do think, I do sincerely think that if the board would like, I am happy to, to, I'm happy to try to keep Bakie open, I really am. I'm willing to give it a shot. But you have to know that if we have a few more COVID cases, we're gonna have some more issues, and I'll just call you all back together. I mean, it's, I really appreciate this, we really want to keep the schools open. And if the board says to me, "Do half-days," I don't know if I can do that for five and four and five, but I, certainly, that would make it easier, Jamie, with regard to the teacher prep component, because they would work the morning, right? And then the kids would leave around 12:30 or 1:00, and then they would have their prep time in the afternoon. So it does alleviate that knot that you and I were discussing earlier about the specials, right? So, a shortened day does answer that. I'm not sure, I haven't run that scenario by Memorial, so I would have to ask them. And I'm willing to do that if you would like me to.
I would like to know that. I mean, to me, we're right up against a wall, we're coming into a long period where they're gonna be out either directly or remote afterwards. And anything that we can do to keep them in would be, I would be favorable towards.
Rough numbers. How many substitutes are we talking about at Bakie versus how many normal teachers?
I would have to ask the exact ratio, because some, you have to remember that I'm not going by, I'm not going, starting off, I'm starting off with subs, Jim, so I gotta figure out, we have subs that are subbing for teachers who are out on quarantines.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not as if I can just say, there's 14 teachers at Bakie, and I need 10 subs. It's, we have literally classrooms that have a sub in them who have now, that sub has now had to quarantine, so another person has to go.
And some people are out on the family medical leave and the ADA leaves as well, isn't it?
Yeah, it's super complicated, there's a lot of subs in the district. I mean, we've done really well with our subbing situation, and we are certainly happy to move whatever subs we have left. I just want to be completely transparent that the majority of the Memorial, the Bakie school staff would end up being substitute teachers. Because everyone has to remember that the other teachers at all the other levels are still teaching all their normal classes remotely. They're not, they still have a full schedule, it's not, the high school specialists are still teaching. The folks that are remote are quarantined, so they're teaching. It's not, it's not as if they're, just because there aren't kids, I think the public forgets that just because there aren't kids in the building, it doesn't mean that they're just like, the staff become.
But it's also the younger kids that have the most difficult time with remote, and the parents have the most difficult time because they can't work if their young kids are at home.
Yep, yep, I'm texting Ryan as I speak, just to see what he thinks about your idea. He's gonna call me, so hold on just a second.
Does anybody else have any comments? Or questions? Don?
I guess I'm just gonna be honest, I am completely torn on what to do here. Because you have young students who really, truly need to be in the building, not only for education, but just, you know, because they need support, they need eyes on them. You also have staff members, you know, if you have a majority of your staff members that are out, you know, at what point does it not make sense to educate in the building? I'm completely torn, I'm at a 50/50 right now. I honestly don't know what to do. I mean, I need somebody to compel me one way or another to decide what the best thing to do is here.
Tammy?
My comment, I guess, is that I am, I'm in favor of keeping the kids in the school to the degree, whatever degree, whatever we have to do to keep them in the buildings that makes sense. I'm more on Jamie's side, I think, there. I think it's really important for them to be in the buildings.
Okay. Pete?
If I'm interpreting what Tom said, our back is to the wall, but it's not quite touching it. That he can still keep Bakie open. I guess I'm leaning towards do that, keep as many buildings as we can open until our back is to the wall. And then the decision really, and I agree with you, Don, 100%, which way do you go, you know? So I guess what I'm saying is, if I'm interpreting it correctly, we can keep as many schools open as we can, and then if the balloon goes up any further, then we're not gonna have a choice. But let's try to keep it, keep as many open as we can.
Okay, Charlie had his hand up next. Charlie, do you want to hear what Tom has to say, or do you want to say what you've got?
And I'll just say what I gotta say.
Okay.
I did just speak to Ryan McCluskey, the principal at Memorial School, about Jamie's proposal, and he said that the reality is, because the way that they team there, and they have two teachers per group of students, that reducing the school day won't help him. So what he said is that what he really needs is more people. And, you know, when we started this at 12:30 or 1:00 today, we thought that we were coming forward as an admin team to recommend that we go fully remote starting tomorrow. We've worked really hard this afternoon to try to keep Bakie open. So I have to say that my recommendation to the board at this point is that we try to keep Bakie open for the next four days. But I don't believe that we can do it for Memorial at this time. I just think that we don't have enough coverage. If you want me to sharpen my pencils a little bit this evening and try to do it, Ryan just is really concerned, because we've been calling his subs to try to get them over to Bakie to cover at Bakie. Right? We really want to keep Bakie open. That's the, our fallback last Friday was first, 7 through 12, and then Memorial, and then last, Bakie, and that's where we're at.
Charlie, go ahead.
Okay, I kind of agree with Tammy. I think we should try and keep everything open as much as possible, to be honest with you. If we keep going like we're going, what's going to happen is, people are gonna get used to this, and then there won't be no public school.
Okay. So are you looking for a motion, Tom?
No, we need to really talk about this, because I can tell you right now, if you guys all vote to keep the schools open, we're not gonna make it, and then I don't know what to do.
Well, I think the motion, yeah, I mean, we hear you that you don't have the staff. Go ahead, Larry.
I have one thing that I'm thinking about, too. If the weather reports are correct, we very well not have school on Thursday anyway.
Right.
You know, that's another thing we need to throw in this mess. If we don't have school Thursday, or even Wednesday and Thursday, we're lucky at two days. I don't know what to say. I was with you guys, I'd like to see the schools stay open, but it looks like we're just being pushed to close them anyway. And I think, Tom, we need to do what you said, give you authorization to call it as you see it.
Tammy?
That's, I just want to clarify my comment. To me, the priority is definitely Bakie, Memorial if possible, but if it's not realistic, I think we should do what we can to keep Bakie open at the very least.
Thank you, Tammy. I just want to remind you that if I, on a normal day, sending 10 subs to one school is astronomical. So I'd be sending eight to 10 subs to Bakie tomorrow. And there are only 14 classrooms. Now, you got to remember, like, you've got the, I'm sorry, there are 20 classrooms, but you've got the specials that we have to cover, and paraprofessionals, and special educators. I mean, it's a lot of juggling to just keep Bakie open tomorrow. I just need you to hear me that this is not easy to do, but we're gonna stay here late and get it done, because it's what's right for kids.
Well, I think that pretty much sums it up, Tom, that it's what's right for kids, and you can do it. So we need to do it, is my opinion. Pete?
Yeah, Tom, I'm gonna throw you under the bus a little bit here.
Uh-oh.
Which I've never done. I think, I think what we should do is keep as many as we can open, with the knowledge that this is very fluid. And Tom is gonna have to make a decision, because things could happen between now and 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. So that, in a sense, we're gonna let Tom make the decision with us saying, "This is what we want." But we cover him, we cover his back, no matter what decision he makes. Because I think we're all in agreement that keep as many as we can open. But all of a sudden, tomorrow morning, he gets a call, and he's got another teacher or two in quarantine, or a couple more kids that cause a teacher or two quarant, whatever, like I say, it's fluid. So we leave it with, Tom, keep as many open as you can, with the understanding is that you may have to make a tough, tough decision, but that we're gonna have your back. Because I don't know if there's any other way we can do this, in my opinion, because it's too fluid. But we're going to do the best we can by keeping as many as we can open now, with the understanding that could change. I don't know how else to handle it, to tell you the truth.
No, Pete, I, I appreciate that. You didn't really throw me under the bus. I, I appreciate what you said. I, I, sorry, Jamie, the bus parked. Um, but, but I think that Jamie said it right. I mean, there isn't a single person on this admin team who doesn't want the schools to stay open. We want the schools open. That, that's not an issue. The issue is, we have to have enough staff to run a public school. And it's not just as simple as just covering the classes. We have to meet their IEPs. We have to run special education. You have to have specials. I can't, the only thing that we could do is shorten the school day. But honestly, in my opinion, I would rather have the K2 kids or the K3 kids go to school for a full normal day and, and have fifth and sixth, even look at, I mean, I can talk with the team tonight and try to keep grade four open at Memorial. Right? I mean, I, I think on a, as you look at the independence of our students, it grows exponentially between fourth and fifth grade. It's just the problem at Memorial is that they don't have enough subs to cover Memorial and send everyone to BAKI. So it, it's just, I, I'm sorry, I, I wish I could, I've tried all afternoon to find a better answer for you than what I'm bringing to you now. I mean, we're 50% better than where I was at one o'clock, which was close everything. So I just need you to hear me that we've worked really hard to do that. And I know you hear that, but want the public to hear that, that we, we want the schools open and we're trying really hard to make that happen.
Well, the, the emails coming in from parents are, they want us to try really hard to do that as well. And they definitely need us to do that, to, to every extent possible.
Yep. So, so why don't we shoot for keeping BAKI open?
I think Don has a question.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, I think we need to leave here with something definitive. Um, you know, trying to say, you know, if we say pre-K through three, or K through three, you know, stays open, we put four through six. Or I think if we say, let's try to keep as many open as possible, I think we're, who knows what time of night that's going to be. And for planning purposes, for families, I mean, that's going to be really, really challenging too. So we also have to take that into consideration. Um, so I would like to, you know, if we have a motion, have a solid motion to go forward with, um, to help families out. Because no matter what we decide, it's going to be hard for families.
Tom, can you, can you keep fourth grade open, do you think, and do BAKI?
No, I think that, that, I think that if I did anything more than BAKI, it would be a miracle, Jim, to be honest.
Okay. Jamie?
Yeah, the, I was kind of going in the same direction for clarification. Um, what I think I'm hearing you say, Tom, and I want to hear you say it rather than me thinking you're saying it is, if we push and mandate, we try Memorial, you might lose both, Memorial and BAKI.
Yep, and then I'm calling it at eight o'clock in the morning or 10 o'clock tonight. Right? That we couldn't do it. Because basically what I'm going to have to do when I get off this call, because the central office staff was meeting for the last two hours to discuss this. And we were on the phone with the BAKI principal at 3:40 saying, look, we think we're going to, we're going to talk to the school board about keeping BAKI open. Um, I have to now like navigate, and I'm not complaining, I'm just informing the community. I have to navigate moving all the substitute teachers from the high school, Memorial and the middle school down to BAKI that we can. And you have to remember, some of those substitute teachers, it's so bad that some of those substitute teachers are teaching remotely substitute teaching. It's not, it's not, it's, it's like a, a complex maze, a, a webbing. And I agree with Charlie completely. Like, my greatest fear in this whole thing is that people are going to get used to not being in school and that is terrifying. I just need you to hear that that, there is, imagine taking somebody who loves what they do and it dedicates their life to it and telling them, we're just not going to do it that way right now. It's terrifying for everybody, the kids, the parents. It's awful, but the reality is, is that we've hit, we've hit a roadblock here with the, the staffing. And I, I, I'm telling you that my best advice to you is to do what Jamie just said. If you, if you, if you try to force keeping both open, you may lose both. And I may have to just do it on the, on, on, with no notice. At least this way, the fourth through sixth grade parents know that tomorrow they have to make a plan. And the, the K3 people know that they have coverage for a few more days. And man, it breaks my heart. I, I want those young kids in school as much as, I want them all in school, but those little ones, they need their teachers. But the problem is, half their teachers aren't there. So they're going into a sub anyway, but if you want to try it, I'm willing to try it. And you know me, if I, if I don't think it's working or I need your help, I'm going to call you back to another meeting tomorrow if I have to.
Tammy, you had your hand up?
I had, I had a question. I don't know if it's a weird question, but, um, the teachers that are quarantining, I know they, you know, obviously a substitute needs to be in the classroom. But can they, can they FaceTime in or remote in somehow and provide support to that substitute? And is that, is that, do you do that routinely?
Yes, yes. And that's exactly what we would do this week at BAKI, Tammy. We would have the teachers connecting with the subs in a really active way to do our best to get as much direct instruction as possible. And that's one thing that we discussed prior to this meeting. That's not a weird question at all. We've been doing it for some quarantines in specific areas like art in particular. Imagine the art teacher being out for 10 days. I mean, thank goodness the governor lowered the quarantine from 14 days to 10. That's made a really big difference, right? Because if you, if you only have to be out for 10 days, it might be one whole school week and one or two days instead of two full straight weeks of, of school. So yes, we, you know, the folks that are quarantining are going to help out in whatever capacity they can.
Tom, haven't you had backup to, um, to help the remote learners, uh, in the synchron, with the synchronous learning situation? Is this kind of parallel to that?
Yeah, the, well, we, we just in the middle of setting up the plans for the, the remote teachers to take over the, the synchronous instruction component at K6. So it's not up and running yet. So yes, it runs parallel, but it's not actually happening yet.
I see, okay.
It, the MOA was just, it seems like it was a long time ago, but the reality is it's only like eight school days or 10 school days. So we're still setting up the programs and we were waiting for all that survey data we received last week. I think Larry has his hand up.
Yeah, Larry.
Um, I have a question. You said if we have the fourth grade in Memorial open, there's a possibility we may lose them all?
Yeah, my, my opinion is that, that if we try to push too hard to open too much, where, where, I, I'm stretched really thin with the staffing and resources that I have to keep K3 open. If you're asking me to open any more than that, I'm nervous.
What you want to open is, uh, K through three at BAKI.
I think I have a chance at pulling that off, Larry, but as Pete said, I'm not making any promises, I'm going to go for it.
Okay.
I don't know who else to put it, right? I'm going to give it the, the, the serious professional try.
Then what we should do is be working. I agree with, uh, what you're saying. So then we should be looking at staying, uh, K, uh, K through three open. And pray to God we can keep them open until, as long as possible. If we're going to bring and take our chance of losing everything, I'd rather see it get some, not all.
Okay, Tammy.
I agree, and I, I agree with what Pete said earlier, that, um, this, this is a really fluid situation. And we, the best that we can do, I think, is, you know, come to consensus that we, that the priority is to try to keep BAKI open to the extent possible and authorize Tom, you know, and the, and the administrative team to make those decisions based on the realities of, you know, what is confronting them. That would be my, you know, that, that would be my suggestion of what we, how we should proceed.
But it, would it, is there a way we could craft a motion that says that, um, we will attempt to keep K3 open as a priority? And should any other resources be available, we will assess and, um, like, I can work with my team for the next hour or two to figure out, okay, what will it take to keep K3 open? And then let's say I've got a couple extra substitutes and somehow I could have fourth grade open. I'd like the latitude to go for it, right? But I'm just saying, I, I'm not optimistic. We've been working all day. Is there a way that you could structure the motion so that I'm going to basically try to keep school open in a progressive manner, starting with K to one to two and, and always move? Does that make sense, Jamie? Like, what if, what if I get through the conversations and I'm like, oh, I could have done this? I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to shortchange our children in, in any way.
Well, we do have to address the concern that Don had about notification to parents in that motion.
Well, if we move to where we keep, uh, K through three open, with the understanding to the public, with the understanding that if we can increase, we will do so if we, God forbid, go the other way, that's another thing too. This could go the other way just as fast as what we're talking about.
The number of phone calls that I'm getting by the hour, that's a real concern. So I need everyone to understand that, um, we're, we're, I'm asking you to support us in attempting to keep K through three open for as long as possible.
Jim, let's try this for a motion to give us something to start with.
Okay.
I move that the, uh, administration work at maintaining K through three open as long as possible. And if additional substitutes become available, where we can open up as we see fit, as the administration sees fit.
Can I, can I make a, a friendly amendment to that?
Sure.
Sure.
Instead of, instead of going K to three, that we authorize the superintendent to keep as many schools as is possible open. Right? Because he may be able to order four, who knows, maybe, you know, you know, so that he has the authorization and, and, and the instruction to keep as many schools as possible open with the understanding that it's based on ability to service the students. So that he, that means that he may have to go the other way.
Well, that's the whole thing, because we don't know. We get off of this meeting and Tom just recalls, we're done.
Keep as many open as you can. I don't want to get into the weeds of, of three and what have you. We're going to authorize to keep as many schools open as he can.
I like that.
That, that, that's pretty general. So if he can keep four, you know, if he can keep the Memorial open, if he, but on the other hand, he can't, so therefore he's also got to close the, you know, K to three. You know, it's, it's going to be his call.
I don't know how else to word it.
You've got to think of that motion first. I mean, is it too broad?
My, my only concern is, so I, I, I'm sitting there and I'm a, a fourth grade teacher on the cusp. And I listened to this and I don't know whether my kid's going to school or not tomorrow. I, I don't know what to prep for, I don't, I don't know what I'm doing. I think that's the point Don made previously is, where do you cut it off? I mean, I like the idea, I'd, I'd, I liked to move there, but, um, Don's point is a valid point. What, what, what about that?
Well, I think, I think tonight before Tom leaves, he is going to inform us that it's his intent as of now to keep K to three, whatever, whatever he has. I, I, I want to be as broad enough so that really, we're going to, we're going to do the best we can with what resources we have. And before we leave tonight, Tom's going to say, it's my intent to have K to three definitely open with the hope to go K to, I'm going to say K to four, based on if he can move people from the high school down. I don't know if there's any other way to do it based on the information we have now.
But Tom, I think what Tom said is based upon sitting here now, if you wanted to know now, his answer is K to three, period.
Yes.
He might be able to do something else, but that would take some time in the future in order to figure that out. And i, if we're going to, if we're going to give a motion like Pete and Larry have suggested, there's got to be some type of a cutoff that, and, and that call will be made by a certain time. So that people know the word that comes out at that period of time, that's the answer. And other, otherwise, you, you just, you know, people will be, you know, Tom's struggling, he's got the, the staff there struggling, going on. And, you know, do I, do I call it now? And he's got people, uh, sending in emails, it's, 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 it's 7:15, when are you going to? I, I think it gets a little klugey in terms of Tom managing. I, I think what he's saying is, right now, I can tell you the board, I can do K through three. I think tomorrow morning I can do K through three. We've, we've looked at that, there's issues, that's the plan, I can do K through three. Uh, if by X time I can do more, this information would be sent out.
That's exactly right.
That's what I'm asking.
I've got a proposed motion here.
Okay.
Um, we're proposed to, and it's, it's not, it's K through three open for the next four days. It's not, right?
Could it say in-person?
Yeah, K through three open for in-person learning through, through this week, based on available staffing. In the event circumstances allow or require changes, the superintendent is authorized to do so.
Yep. Yes. If, if, okay, let's have a vote, because I think Don needs to leave.
Don, do you have something?
Uh, Tom was just saying I have to leave, I, by 4:55, I have to be in the car to take my daughter to tryouts.
So we, we have a second, I believe, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so roll call vote, uh, all in favor of the motion, Larry?
Yes.
Uh, Don?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Uh, Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes, but Tom said something, I just, you know, he said something about, well, I might get a phone call, so I vote yes. Tom, stop answering the phone.
I, I also vote yes.
Problem is, it comes in text and email, Jamie, it's not always the phone.
Just turn it off.
My wife is.
So my, my vote is also yes.
All right, I'll keep working on it, guys. I'm going to hit it right now with the team. I'm going to call a meeting with the admins and figure this out.
Okay, I just want to notify the public that the next school board meeting is Wednesday, the 16th at 6:00 PM. It'll be via Zoom. And I believe the BudCon meeting Thursday, the 17th at 7:00 PM will also be via Zoom. But the, the access information will be on the SAU17.net website.
That is correct.
Is there no day for the, um, budget?
Possibly, we'll know when the, when we know.
Okay, no, I didn't know.
But it's going to be Zoom, as, as of now, it's probably going to be Zoom.
Yeah, um, I asked Phyllis to, after this meeting, I was going to ask you all. Uh, we, we figured that in light of everything that's going on, we should probably be remote on Wednesday, as is the BudCon. Um, and Phyllis will send out all the updated information with the proper phone numbers and emails and YouTube links and all that, um, tonight or tomorrow morning.
Any other, anything else, any other business? If not, we're, we're adjourned.